Hello everyone, my name is Rowan Miller. I'll be moderating tonight, or today. We're just gonna let the, lots of people are still logging in and joining, so we're just gonna let the flow even out there, and then we'll get started. In the meantime, again, my name is Rowan. I was part of Dimitri's team. I was a Green Party candidate for 2019 here in Tobik Mactaquack, on the east, in New Brunswick, just north of Fredericton. The way tonight is gonna work is, we're going to go have a moderated conversation about, on issues that are important to both Dimitri and Jean, and then we'll be moving on to questions from the audience. So please state, put your question in the chat. This is a pretty big call. We're extremely pleased by the turnout. We were expecting, we were expecting a smaller group, so this is awesome. Please write your question in the chat. Do not write a non-question. It's very difficult to keep track of questions when there's a conversation going on in the chat. So please enter a question. Put, enter it to everyone, so we can all see it. And then when we get to that point, I will read the question out. Okay, I think that about covers it. Thank you so much, guys, for joining. If you would please mute your microphone, and only unmute it when you are, when we get to questions. I can either read the question out, or you can, I'm sorry, I was, I said that wrong before. I can either read the question out, or you can write, or you can ask it yourself. Wonderful. Alright, I think we're all here now. Dimitri, Jean, would you like me to give introductions? Or should I do my best to summarize your many accomplishments in a short blurb?
Oh, fair enough. I think, I think people got pretty much a good picture where I'm coming from. I can see the people on the call I'm calling. I've had the pleasure of speaking to them in the past, most of them. So why don't you just very briefly touch on my background, Rowan, and let's let Jean talk about her illustrious background as an anti-poverty advocate.
Unless, unless Jean has a hard time talking about herself, which I understand. If Jean, if you prefer me to introduce you, I completely understand.
Yeah, so I'm a city councillor in Vancouver. First term, I'm a member of the Coalition of Progressive Electors. I'm the only one in that party on council. I'm probably the most left-wing one on council. I have spent most of my, I'm 77, I spent most of my life, after the age of about 30, working in anti-poverty and housing movements. And did a little deek into climate a couple of years ago, and I spent a couple, four days in jail for trying to block the Trans Mountain Pipeline.
Applause to that, Jean. I think, I think everyone on this call would surely give you an ovation for that.
Well, one of the things it did was teach me that jail is not the place for most of the people who are there. So it fits in well with the defund police movement. So on council, I'm working on renters' issues, trying to get some action on homelessness, which is very frustrating. And, yeah, that's about it.
I think it is fair to say, Jean, that you are probably one of the most radical and progressive and left-wing councillors on any major city council in the country. So it's a real honour to have you here. Again, as I said earlier, I wish we could have someone like you in every city in Canada. I really, just reading about your history, you've been a lifetime advocate of pretty much all that is worthy and good. And I'm really honoured to have you here. Thank you so much for sitting down with Dimitri. Great, we have tons of people joining, this is really fantastic. And of course Dimitri Lascaris is running for Green Party leader. He is a solid leftist eco-socialist, ready to give Canadians a real choice on the ballot, rather than one of four color-coded neoliberal parties. So, thank you, thank you so much, Dimitri, thank you so much, Jean, and I think we can get started. So first, you mentioned some of your background there, Jean. I figured we could maybe open up this conversation with the broadest question. Dimitri, of course, you're an avowed eco-socialist. And just kind of have a conversation about what's the word socialism means. Because it's coming up a lot more in discourse. Increasingly less of a dirty word, in my opinion, is a very good step in the right direction. So yeah, let's just maybe talk a little bit about this, and what kind of role do we see the concept of socialism playing as politics develop, both on a municipal and federal level?
Jean, would you like to tackle that one first?
Oh sure. So, I used to work with communists back in the 80s. They were really strong in the peace movement, and I really liked working with them because they did a lot of work and didn't take credit for it, and they were very progressive. I haven't called myself a socialist. Because there's so many different definitions of it. I like to just say what I'm for, and show what I'm for by working for it. And then, I told Dimitri earlier, I did take a quiz once, and it came out that I was a socialist. But anyway, that's where I've landed so far. I might land someplace else later.
So, I, you know, as you noted, Rowan, I do actually identify as a socialist, but like Jean, I have learned it's very, very important to talk about your policies and your priorities, first and foremost. And, you know, let people infer from that, where you may lie on the political spectrum, I definitely lie on the left of the political spectrum, and I'm not shy about saying that. But there is a lot of uncertainty about what socialism means. It means different things to different people. Of course, we have to deal with the fact that in our intensely neoliberal power structures, the term socialism has been vilified fairly effectively. But despite all of that, and I've talked about this many, I've talked about this many times in the campaign trail, polling shows that, you know, significant majority of Canadians have a positive view of socialism. And that's particularly true in the Green Party and the NDP. And even within the Liberals, the number of people who, according to the most recent poll, had a positive view of socialism were 74%. So I, on the one hand, I agree that it's important to emphasize your policies if you're running for political office, to avoid any misunderstanding. But I think the media has done a pretty effective job of convincing us that socialism is a dirty word in our society. And I don't think that the polling evidence bears that out any longer. It may have been once. You know, and I think a lot of, a lot was accomplished through the work of Bernie Sanders in the United States, you know, I think he influenced people here in Canada as well by, you know, courageously, you know, proclaiming himself throughout his political career to be a democratic socialist. So I would like to build on that without, you know, falling into the trap of people mischaracterizing me as something that I'm not.
Fantastic. Alright, well, I really appreciate that. Let's, I think what we're going to find is that if the, the classic socialist position on a whole lot of, on a whole lot of topics, well, we'll be, we'll be talking about a lot of issues right now with kind of a bent in that direction, so it's it's hard to see how that term could remain a dirty term, since that is really what everyone will be talking about. Even as we perhaps move out of the neoliberal frame, I can only hope we will. So we're going on to a variety of social issues that you both have very strong beliefs on and have worked in throughout your careers. I think it'd be first, first worth talking about the housing strategy. Or the Liberals' housing strategy, Liberal federal housing strategy, that I, I understand, Jean, you have a lot of strong thoughts about, and have quite the critique for. So let's perhaps talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, first of all, I forgot to acknowledge that I'm on the stolen territory of the Musqueam, Slavutus, and Squamish, and thank them for caring for this land for so many eons, and commit to trying to get some of it at least back to them, or compensated for the rest. Yeah, the national housing strategy is more like, the Liberals' national housing strategy, it's more like a national housing PR campaign, as far as I'm concerned. I've always been, well, as, as a 77-year-old, I can remember when we hardly had any homelessness in Vancouver or Canada. And it just started ramping up after the government ended the Canada Assistance Plan, and stopped funding, which actually ending the Canada Assistance Plan made it so that the feds weren't contributing half of province's welfare money. So welfare payments stopped going up all across the country. So people don't have enough to pay rent, and then they stopped funding social housing. So now this, in 2017, this national housing strategy comes along, and everyone says, "Oh, good, housing is a human right." But then when you look at it, what is it? And they started out saying it was $40 billion for housing, and now they're saying it's $55 billion for housing. Over 10 years, of course. And when you look at it, it's all the money that was previously spent on housing or housing-related things. It includes the provincial contributions, the contributions that they hope provinces will make. And it includes loans, which aren't even grants. So when you build housing with loans, it means that you have to pay the loans off, and that the rents have to be so high that low-income people can't afford that housing. And then when you look at what their goals are around homelessness, their goal is to reduce chronic homelessness by 50% within 10 years. So what's chronic homelessness? It's about 20% of people who are homeless. So reducing 10% of homelessness in 10 years, that goal is useless. It's, we should be reducing 100% of homelessness in three years, in my opinion. And, I mean, this has always been a big issue to me, but now that I'm a city councillor, today I was just looking at the correspondence roundup that all of the councillors get every morning. And half the correspondence we got was about homelessness. Either people trashing people who are homeless, or people saying, "Do something." And traditionally, the city provides land, and the feds and the province build the buildings. And what we're seeing is the city is providing the land, the province is building some buildings, and the feds are missing in action. So one of the reasons I actually wanted to be here was because I'm hoping Dimitri can shame, or put some pressure on the feds around their ridiculous, their terrible, terrible housing strategy when it comes to homelessness. Which is growing, actually. It's not being diminished.
So Jean, I sat on the, for eight years on the board of a homeless shelter in London, Ontario, called the Unity Project for the Relief of Homelessness, and it was dependent upon a mix of federal government, provincial government, municipal government, financing, and private donations. Was constantly struggling with the demands on the organisation relative to its resources. And, one thing I learned, came to understand by sitting on the board of the Unity Project, is that really homelessness is in many ways, an outcome of other social injustices and failures of our society to take care of our most vulnerable people. For example, in delivering adequate, adequate healthcare, adequate mental healthcare, in dealing effectively with substance abuse, ensuring that people who can't find gainful employment have enough money to buy their essentials. And ultimately, this really does come down to, it struck me as having the political will to invest the financial resources and doing that intelligently, to deal with the root causes of homelessness. And I always thought that that is something that we should be striving as a society to eliminate in the short term. I was very intrigued and encouraged to hear you say, "Three years, we should get to zero homelessness." What, if you had a wish list, if you were going to the federal government with a plan to get, to bring an end to this scourge of homelessness in our country, and there's no excuse for a country having our resources to tolerate any level of homelessness, what would be the main, your main asks of the federal government to get this done in three years?
The first thing would be money to lease empty hotels. Work with, unite here, the hotel union, out here anyway, to set up good safety protocols. And let homeless people, let homeless people get into the empty hotels. With some sort of management, with different types of management structures, depending on what type of people and what their needs are. So there could be a variety. There could be indigenous-led ones. There could be ones for people who use drugs. There could be one for people who are trying to get off drugs, whatever. There should be a variety of them. There's lots of empty hotels. It could be a win-win for the whole hotel industry, for the workers, and for people who are homeless. That's the first thing, lease those hotels. For the, and then, while the folks are nice and dry and warm in the hotels, start building housing. We've shown out here that you can build modular housing fairly fast. Modular housing just means it's built in a factory rather than on-site. They're saying now that they're costing about $250,000 per unit, not counting land. The city provides the land. You get a nice unit of housing. You need to have good management that involves the tenants. They need to have proper tenant rights. But you could, you know, for, in Vancouver, we have about 2,000 counted homeless people, probably at least 3,000 homeless, because it's an undercount. So for a few hundred million dollars, you could house everybody that's homeless. And...
Sorry, are you talking nation-wide?
No, just Vancouver.
Vancouver.
Vancouver. But we all know that people who are homeless have about half the life expectancy as other people. So that's, that's the best reason that we should do it. And then the next, another reason we should do it is, all the studies show that it's way cheaper to house homeless people than leave them on the street. We had a study in Vancouver the other few months ago that said we spent eight and a half million dollars, the city spent eight and a half million dollars dealing with just part of homelessness, not count, counting police. So, and it's way cheaper for healthcare, and it's way more humane. So, all the studies show it's cheaper, so let's just do it. That's what I think. And, you know, I campaigned on the idea of a mansion tax, because at the municipal level, the only way you have of getting revenue aside from fees is property tax, and property tax isn't progressive. But if we had a mansion tax, that would be a progressive tax, but unfortunately, we need the province to grant us the power to have that. If the, if municipalities had the power to have a progressive tax that we could levy, and then use that money to build housing for people who are homeless, and other people that need housing, after we got the homeless, homeless people housed, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
So, that brings us, this actually closely segues into our next area of discussion, which is the defund the police movement, and what is to be done, or how, what is to be done about the state of policing in our country today? We, we know that the neoliberal project has poured billions into, as you mentioned earlier, Jean, keeping the homeless homeless, disciplining and oppressing essentially the most vulnerable members of society, and systematically denying them options. The police have been a very important part of this infrastructure of oppression. Where do we, what is our, what is our take on that, on the movement? How do we feel about it? Or would you like to see it go? And speaking both on the municipal level and also Dimitri, how, how do you foresee, what's the kind of role a federal party can play in it? Because of course, these things, like, how can it, it has some police forces directly in its jurisdiction, others are not. How do we coordinate a response to really take care of the policing problem that is on every aspect of our society? Permeating every aspect of our society?
Well, I think, I think we, you know, we have, there's jurisdictional issues, of course. I don't know that the federal government has any power to defund the provincial or municipal police forces. And then there's also the question of democratic decision-making, and I think, you know, my tendency would be to say that communities themselves, to the extent that they have municipal policing, it's the communities themselves that should decide how much money is going to be allocated to municipal policing, and what form that policing is going to take. So I would favor, you know, grassroots determination of those issues. To the extent we're talking about municipal policing or provincial policing, but at the federal level, that is entirely within a jurisdiction, and we are entirely justified in having a robust discussion about that, and I'm calling for a 50% reduction in the funding of the RCMP over a five-year period, and the reallocation of that money to what, you know, what I think are widely understood to be the root causes of behaviours that we call criminal. You know, so that money would be reinvested in social services, and mental healthcare, and treating substance abuse, and domestic violence. Things that could ultimately lead to behaviours which, you know, which we we use the police to try to constrain. And oftentimes, they do that in ways that are quite violent and, and some systemically racist. So, I'm a big fan of, I prefer not to call it defunding, because it doesn't talk about what the positive side of the equation is, that you're going to reallocate that money and reinvest it in social services and supports that people need. But, the principle of reducing police funding and reallocating is one that I'm enthusiastically supportive of.
So, a few weeks ago, we had this scene in Vancouver where a whole bunch of police descended upon a unused parking lot that was next to a park, where about 60 homeless people were camping. And they spent the day there with all kinds of weapons and everything, and eventually, without giving them any alternative place to go to, forced all these homeless people to move, to move to nowhere. And in the process, they arrested 48 people, mostly supporters. So this is an example of how a lot of police work doesn't have anything to do with criminals. And, when I brought a motion around the police to council a few weeks ago, and there were almost 400 people who spoke. And they talked about police involvement in sex work, police involvement in mental health issues, police involvement in drug use issues, which don't actually involve any crime, except sort of a trumped-up crime. So, I think where the feds could come in here is, if the feds put money into housing, we wouldn't need the police to go move homeless people from place to place to place to place, whenever somebody calls and says, you know, "Get this homeless person off my doorstep." If the feds put in really good safe supply legislation, I know you had, you did an interview with Gabor Maté. We had a really good safe supply. We wouldn't have people having to do break and enters in order to get the money for their drugs. And, they wouldn't die because the drugs would be safe. But that's something that the feds could do. And I think there's laws around sex work that the feds could do to make that safer. So, there's lots of things that could be done at that level that would actually reduce the the need for police by taking all of those things out of the realm of law enforcement. Actually, our chief of police, the first and basically only thing he ever said to me was something like, "60% of our work has nothing to do with crime." So, yeah, I think there's stuff for all levels of government to do. In BC, the police are basically controlled by the province, but they're supposed to take into account the priorities, goals, and objectives of the cities. So what I was trying to do was get a motion through that would tell the province that our priority goal and objective was to replace a lot of those, a lot of the work that police do with people who are homeless, sex workers, drug users, and around mental health, to replace those with community-led initiatives.
But I really, I think it's, you're making a very important point, Jean, that of course, there's the humanitarian aspect, that we as a democratic society should not allow anybody to live in the streets. But that there's, you're looking at this purely from an economic fiscal perspective, there are considerable savings, particularly to the municipal governments and municipal police forces, arising from robust federal investment in providing, you know, permanent housing. And so just, just looking at it strictly from an economic and fiscal perspective, it's the right thing to do. Quite apart from the all-important humanitarian question of whether we as a society should allow anybody to live in the street. So I think it's really important that we have that discussion. I know in the Green Party, there's a lot of talk about fiscal responsibility. And I've been trying to stress, and I think you've done a wonderful job of making that clear from somebody, from a perspective of somebody in municipal government, the savings that can accrue to your community if you don't have to deal, if you don't have to address, the police don't have to address the various challenges arising from homelessness.
Yeah, and other things too, like sex work, drug use, and mental health.
What I'm, what I'm hearing here is that, in addition to the actual things which are within the jurisdiction of the federal government, such as reducing funding to the RCMP, such as mandate, changing laws, mandating more payments be given to provinces and municipalities to pay for these services which are absolutely essential to preventing community breakdown. Do you see the idea of the Green Party being a mechanism to advocate for these things, both within it, within the opposition and when it forms government? And being always there as an active partner in solving these problems? Is that a, is that a statement that you both agree with? Would you like to see that from the Green Party?
Sure.
Do you see that as a role for the Green Party, Dimitri?
Absolutely. If you're talking about collaboration, federal municipal collaboration for these issues.
And being a director, and being a direct reactive participant in that.
Yes, absolutely. But, you know, always being mindful of the jurisdictional constraints that federal, municipal, and provincial governments all confront. But there's nothing to prevent us from engaging in a high level of coordination with people like Jean on municipal councils to make sure that we're doing everything we can do as a federal party to assist.
So money for housing, money for housing, we desperately need it.
I agree.
And safe supply.
Those things that everyone in this call, I'm certain, would give you a standing ovation. Were we not all in, were it not all in Zoom? If, so I, so closely, closely connected with the idea of ensuring that there is good, or ensuring that the marginalized peoples, the underprivileged peoples, the homeless, homeless, working class, underpaid, underwage peoples are properly democratically represented, and their interests are actually represented in government. Let's talk a little bit about how campaign financing has changed inside of, in British Columbia with the NDP Green Government Court of blocking corporate and union donations. I understand this had quite a big effect on the composition of the Vancouver City Council.
Yeah, I think it did. The NDP government changed the campaign, municipal campaign financing rules to prevent donations from unions and corporations. And as a result, the majority political party at our city, which was called Vision, which was in power, I think, for at least a decade, got wiped out. We still don't have what I would call a progressive council, however. But it meant that we had to rely on, everybody had to rely on more individual donations. I think the maximum campaign contribution is $1,200 per person. Which is still a lot, but it's way better than it was.
Jean, if there were, if that contribution limit were much lower, let's suppose it were put at 100 bucks per person, or that we eliminated all private financing of political campaigns, and we found a a neutral, a nonpartisan way to fund political campaigns publicly, through public money. Do you think that, do you think that the composition of council would continue to change in Vancouver? Do you think that this is having an impact on, even, even after these changes that the government adopted provincially? Do you think this is having a major impact still, the $1,200 contribution limit, on whether the council is reflecting sort of the political orientation of the people of Vancouver?
Well, with what we've got now, there's still loopholes in it, because you have things like family members each giving $1,200, things like that. So if you're rich, you do have a bigger influence. I think, yeah, some people have talked about government funding of campaigns, which is an interesting idea. The Canadian Taxpayers Federation doesn't like it, I think, but that's a win for me. Yeah, so, other ways that, like, the way Bernie is funding his campaign, was funding his campaign, you know, with smaller donations, I think that's the way to go. Yeah, so other ways that like the way Bernie is funding his campaign uh was funding his campaign, you know, with smaller donations. I think that's the way to go. I mean, people who don't have any money don't have any money really, so they can't contribute anything. So there's always a a bias. Uh in terms of who gets who gets to collect campaign donations because you can't collect from people who have nothing.
Right.
Yeah.
So um and I so Dimitri, you uh as a leader of the Green Party, would you advocate for uh much more stringent electoral contribution rules? Uh but both in the op yeah.
It's it's currently at sixteen hundred and twenty-five and, you know, even with the tax credit. The vast majority of people in our society can't contribute that kind of money in the space of a year. Uh and, you know, significant portion of the population can't make any. Uh meaningful contribution, let alone one at that of that magnitude. And so what you end up having is. You know, people with affluent members of our society have an outsized impact on who gets elected. Uh there've been studies done which show a high correlation between, you know, campaign spending and success, electoral success. So if we want to, you know, we we do need to limit the role of money in uh in politics. It is uneven incredibly unevenly distributed in our economy. Uh I would favor much lower campaign limits and much more robust public funding of political campaigns at the federal level.
And you know what? If you're a low-income person that doesn't pay taxes. You don't get any tax back when you donate to a political candidate federally.
Exactly. Yeah. So the tax credit is actually of particular appeal to the people who are better off in our society, but useless to. Those who uh who who have, you know, much less means. I think that's a very important point, Gene. Um so the system is designed basically to, whether winningly or unwittingly. A system of kind of campaign finance federally, and it's even worse in some provinces, is designed to give the affluent members of our society a disproportionate. Uh influence over who gets elected. And, you know, if we're going to have a real robust democracy, we have to stop that from happening.
And would you support to uh the investigation implementation or an advocacy for a public financing system?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. If we're going to have private financing at all, I think it should be very, very uh there should be a very, very low limit, something in the range of a hundred dollars or less.
Fantastic. That's a that's really good stuff from both you guys. Um I think while we're while we're on the subject, talking specifically about people not. Having any money to give to donations, let alone anything. Um I think it's a good time to talk about guaranteed livable income. Uh and your position, Dimitri, on a twenty-dollar minimum wage. Uh both these things concern directly the kind of the amount of cash ordinary Canadians have. Um yeah, I know it'd be really good to hear perspectives from both of you.
Sure. So um of course, I and all the candidates, I'm sure, are enthusiastic, but are nine candidates in this race. We're all enthusiastic supporters of guaranteed livable income. Um the simple principle is that every single member of our society should have guaranteed. Uh to them, the 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 means, the economic means to uh to acquire and. The essentials of life. So decent housing, uh food, medication, clothing, uh transportation. Uh this is something that I think we have as a responsibility as a society to guarantee to all of our citizens. I think without that. Uh it's very hard to, I mean, first of all, it's not fair from from a social perspective, but it's also very hard to have a true. Democratic system when some people are so suffering from so much privation that they don't know from one day to the next whether they're going to be able to feed their kids. Whether they're going to be able to rent their pay their rent check. Very hard to be fully engaged in the democratic system when you're dealing with those kinds of burdens and anxieties. So uh I think just from the perspective of fairness, from the perspective of maintaining a robust democracy, we need to do it. But it also makes good economic sense because people who have. Uh people to whom the guaranteed livable income is is given and who need it, they're going to spend that money. They are going to need to spend that money in order to maintain a decent quality of life, and that provides economic stimulus. Uh and then, of course, providing a guaranteed livable income and helping to prevent people from falling through the cracks will minimize. Expenses we're now incurring, you know, in terms of policing. Uh so dealing with homelessness and so forth, we've already talked about this in terms of dealing with. Uh, you know, criminal behavior that results from the desperation of of poverty and homelessness, uh you know, will be able to better deal with a whole range of social ills that are costing us a lot of money. So I think there are so many reasons why guaranteed livable income makes a lot of sense. Uh but there is, you know, a concern, particularly from people on the left, that this is going to become a way of justifying. The uh evisceration of other important social programs. Uh and I think without, I'd like to turn it over to Gene. We had a chat about this, and I know this is a concern that that Gene has articulated, so I'd like to, I'm curious to know what she has to say about that.
Yeah, we did talk about it for a little while. I've always been in favor of raising welfare and disability payments and making them so. People didn't have to be demeaned in order to get them. I know the welfare system is pretty awful. I've been on welfare myself. Um. But I've always been leery of a guaranteed income because, first of all, of the supporters. A lot of the supporters are very right-wing people. And they have been throughout history, like there's examples of the guaranteed income like from the seventeen hundreds. In Spinemham Ham in England where they had a sort of guaranteed income where. Which made it so that farmers would hire the people who were on the guaranteed income so they wouldn't have to pay them very much. And then they wouldn't hire the other people. Uh and what it did, what it it just pushed wages down. So my two hugest fears about the guaranteed income is that it will be used. As a top-up for inadequate wages. And uh one of the sources of my immediate fears on that was actually the Green Provincial Platform in B C where they. Were talking about using a guaranteed income to top up minimum wages. So I was really pleased to see Dimitri saying that he liked, that he was pushing for a twenty-dollar an hour minimum wage. That's basically a living wage in B C, which is good. And my other fear, so so the thing is, if you have a guaranteed income that is either inadequate to live on. Or goes along with not raising minimum wage, then employers can use that as a top-up for very low wages. So they'll be making a profit. Because they're being subsidized by taxpayers to pay that low wage. So I think that. Could be a huge problem. And then the other problem is people say, well, a guaranteed income would consolidate all of our existing social programs. Well, consolidate could also mean obliterate, like. If the guaranteed income was fifteen hundred a month, would that mean that seniors who were getting seventeen hundred a month. Would get reduced down to fifteen hundred? Would a guaranteed income mean that people uh people in power would say, oh. You have a guaranteed income, now you can go buy your childcare. We don't need to have ten-dollar-a-day childcare. Would it mean, oh, you can spend more on drugs, this kind of thing? So it kind of commodifies. It could commodify. What are, I think, are important public pensions and services. So that's why I'm kind of leery of it, but I was heartened to see that you talked about improving and. Increasing the number of public services and that you talked about the twenty-dollar-an-hour minimum wage, but I still think. We have to be incredibly um careful about what kind of guaranteed income. That we want. If the liberals or somebody come up and say, oh, we're going to have a guaranteed income of five hundred dollars a month. And you have to work in order to get it and um it's going to be a wage top-up. Are we, you know, will the Greens support it because it's called a guaranteed income, even though it's just a wage top-up to exploiting employers? So that's kind of what my leery leeryness is based on.
Yeah, I think your your concerns are entirely sensible, Jean, and the devil will be in the details, and we have to design the guaranteed livable income. Program in a way to prevent that kind of sleight of hand. Uh none of the existing social supports should be weakened. Uh in order to implement a guaranteed livable income. This would be something would be something. In fact, I'm calling for. Uh various forms of social support to be enhanced. Uh in connect in addition to the guaranteed livable income, the twenty-dollar minimum wage. Uh is part of it, but you know, I want to see a much more robust national pension system. Uh so that we guarantee to every Canadian uh a dignified life in retirement and uh and we 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 aren't doing that right now. Uh you know, I think there should be a pharmacare program uh so that people don't have to pay for their essential medicines. And the thing is for sure, this should never be used, a guaranteed livable income to weaken existing social programs. Uh so we have, we have to be very diligent about that and uh and mindful of the fact that this is a this is a type of program that could end up. Uh defeating the underlying purpose for which we all advocate for.
Yeah.
Great. Well, um I think we have time for one last area of discussion that I think it's very important to talk about and probably a possibly a good one to end on, so it remains in our thoughts. Uh and that is the issue of indigenous rights, especially in regards to indigenous rights. Uh in the municipal governments, how they can be better represented. Um as you open, Gene, um I should have opened as well. I am on the unceded territory of the lowest of people. Um it's actually rather sad, the exact part of New Brunswick that I lived that I live on. Uh was originally part of the Tobic Reserve, um but the Tobic Reserve was squatted on by my ancestors mainly. And uh the government of Canada in the, I think it was the thirties, uh simply told the Tobic Reserve. You're not really going to get that part of your reserve back. You might as well just sell. Um and basically with a hundred percent or they were under no circumstances would they ask the squatters to leave, even though they were legally not supposed to be there. Um so if we could just talk a little bit about that uh and and what kind of directions we need to lead to. It's a very big question, obviously, we aren't going to cover everything. But just your in general, your thoughts and uh what are some immediate actions perhaps that can be taken?
Um. In Van there's Vancouver staff and council is very, very much wants to be seen as pro-indigenous. Um there is a hunk of land in Vancouver called Sinoq. Which is indigenous land, which is being developed by the Squamish people. Um and the city is basically saying it's their land and. Not applying, you know, the city zoning requirements and that kind of thing to it. So it's going to be pretty interesting to see how that works out. And I'm hoping that, I mean, there's other, of course, the whole city is indigenous land. Cause none of, well, it's just all is and. I'm interested in, are there other ways that we could actually give land back? Could we give? Could we have a property transfer tax that uh gave money to indigenous people so they could get the land, buy back the land they wanted? Could we actually give them land back that we own? Um these kinds of things, but I haven't seen much appetite for. You know, the kind of the major things about giving land back or compensating people for land at the municipal level. Uh but I would like to, and I keep trying to push for it.
You know, I I haven't I haven't uh served on municipal government, so I I it's hard for me to comment on the particular indigenous rights challenges that municipal governments confront, but I was. Uh sort of had a front row view of one particular dispute uh in Caledonia recently in Ontario. Uh where uh a developer at a site called, which the developer calls Mackenzie Meadows, is trying to build another. Uh subdivision in the Caledonia, Ontario area. Uh in what is considered by the Six Nations Reserve to be indigenous land. And so I went out there uh as a show of solidarity with them a couple of weeks ago, and they were telling me how uh the municipal police had been sent out. Uh to brutalize some of the land defenders, all of whom were peaceful. Uh rubber bullets were being fired as I was speaking to them. There was a a helicopter flying low overhead, getting ever closer to us and for no. Reason other than intimidation and harassment. Uh and so I think this is just for me a stark reminder that we have to implement undrip at the first possible opportunity and actually. Respect the terms of undrip, not just a lip service to it. And a key part of that is the notion of consent. That indigenous peoples have, they have to have a right of veto. Over any development, so-called development or extractive project on indigenous lands. And if they say no, then there no must be respected. Uh and it must be respected by all levels of government. And I think that that should be a federal law, it should, you know, we should fully implement undrip at the federal level. And uh and and you know, what you're talking about, Gene, is going even further in that restoring lands to indigenous peoples, which I think is a wonderful idea. Uh but that that obviously is going to involve uh considerable cost. And so we get into questions about where is the funding going to come from and so forth, but in principle, I think that 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 would be wonderful if we could do that.
Isn't there lots of Crown land?
Oh, oh, absolutely. To the extent that there's land owned by the Crown currently. Uh or in this municipal, in municipal owned land. Absolutely, we could turn over large swaths of Crown land to indigenous peoples. And uh I I've been talking along the campaign trail about reparations. This country committed. Uh, you know, the government of Canada committed a genocide and it was, it is not really ever been ended. Uh the the brutality of it has been ameliorated, but we've never actually. Brought to an end the ongoing genocide of indigenous peoples and uh made. Uh paid them reparations for what was done to them, and I think that we have to have a real discussion about that. And, you know, we. The real question is, what what form is the reparations? What should are they going to take? Is it going to be through land transfers, cash grants? Uh or combination of those things, other things, but we as a society owe it to indigenous peoples to pay reparations in some form. And uh land transfers could well be part of that.
I had muted myself. Um all right, well, uh now that we, I think that's covered uh most of the issues we wanted to have in this moderated conversation. I think now we can move on to other questions from the audience. Uh I'm going to go down chronologically. I'd also like to say to, I said Willistook people, I meant Willistook. Uh or Willistook, yeah, Willistook, uh the Willistook itself is the river, is the Saint John, what is known by settler civilization as the Saint John River, uh which is actually right upside my window. Um I I can see that there are so many Brunswickers in the call, so uh I wanted to be sure. Um actually, our first question is from a New Brunswicker, and it's really awesome to see so many people from across the country joining. Uh Linia, uh you have the floor. If you'd like me to read your question, or I can read it myself. Uh Linia, Linaya, sorry if I'm pronouncing your name wrong.
Um Linaya says you can.
Okay, I just I just saw that now. Yes. Okay, fantastic. Um so Linaya says, uh her city is Saint John, New Brunswick. Uh Saint John lost via rail in nineteen ninety-four. Um our city is overrun by oil trains. Do you support bringing the passenger rail up? Nationalize it and upgrade it to high-speed rail? What is your position on this? That's for you, Dimitri.
Uh absolutely support uh bringing passenger rail to. To Saint John and to other communities in Canada which desperately need passenger rail. It's amazing that, you know, there's no passenger rail to Calgary, the fourth largest city in the country. But it shouldn't be confined to large cities. Uh you know, communities like Saint John should also have passenger rail. Uh whether we would make it high-speed rail, I think, you know. Possibly, I think we would want to look at whether that would be a wise investment, whether we invest that kind of money to make high-speed rail available. Uh I don't know the answer to that question as I sit here, uh but I think it's something that should be looked at, certainly within. Uh as an economic proposition, uh I think as as a matter of public investment, certainly within. Uh certain some corridors like Edmonton, Calgary, uh the Windsor to Quebec City corridor, there should definitely be high-speed rail. And it may make sense to extend it all the way out to Saint John, but certainly we should have passenger rail. Uh to communities like Saint John all around the country. And uh and I think that that should be under public control.
Um a lot of what is talked about, Dimitri, is or what is talked about in transportation advocacy circles is a hub and spoke system. So similar to uh rare, similar to airplane or air transit, uh essentially routes to major cities via high speed. Versus and with with branch lines at uh low speed or regular speed trains.
Right, right. That that sounds like a sensible approach. Absolutely.
Um so. Uh I was wondering, uh Gene, do you have any thoughts on rail service, both intra and intercity? I was wondering, Jean, do you have any thoughts on rail service, both intra and intercity?
Um. Not, not anything more than just public transit is good as opposed to private, and I think we should be. Moving in that direction because of global warming. We don't really deal too much with trains at the city level.
In, in Vancouver, is the transit system owned by a commission that is independent of the city government?
Oh, the transit system is. An inexplicable bureaucracy that it seems impossible to influence in any way in Vancouver. It's, a lot of it is appointed by the province and it seems to be pretty independent and. Yeah, it's pretty, I, I know I've been trying to get them to, I've been trying to push for free transit for kids and, and for low income people. Victoria has actually done it, but here it just, it just seems to get mired in the bureaucracy, even when we get resolutions passed going for it.
Dimitri is a, would you? Even though transit remains under, as we talked about earlier, levels of government that the federal government might not have control over. Do you see the federal government as a means of advocating it? Strategy such as things like that, even working with, even if you don't have jurisdiction?
Yeah, I mean, the, the spending capacity of the federal government is far beyond that of any other form of government, you know, partly because. The taxing powers of the federal government, so compared to municipal governments, which have very, very constrained taxing powers, but also the federal government. Has the capacity to create money. Bank of Canada can generate currency and, you know, either granted or paid or lent it on a zero interest basis to the federal government. So we have to use our spending powers. To enable municipalities and provincial governments to. Improve and expand their public transportation systems and make them more accessible. I think ultimately, public transportation. Should be free to the greatest possible extent. Jean talked about children and low income persons. That's a great start. I would hope that we, we should, we can and should be more ambitious than that. And actually make it generally available to the public at no, or almost no cost to maximize. The public's incentive to use the public transportation system. We're, we're in a place right now from the perspective of climate emergency where. We have to bring to bear all the tools and resources at our disposal to decrease our greenhouse gas emissions as rapidly as possible. And a robust and expanded public transportation system that's fully accessible to the public is a key part of that, of that goal.
Thank you so much, Dimitri. Thank you, Jean. We have a next question is from Myna Lee Johnston. She has a question for Jean. Myna, you have the floor.
I was just typing in something about transportation, two thousand and five Sats Canada, the social costs of driving are at that. Hundred eighty seven point five billion a year. We spend so much supporting driving rather than transit. But back to the beginning of the discussion. I appreciate all your thoughts, Jean. I sat in on. In Victoria with the Portland people that came, the Victoria city sponsored it and the Portland housing that did the. Tiny house village. And the police report from there was they had very few incidents because they gave the people the ability to run. The, the people who were took over the, and helped build those tiny homes. And when you get people involved in the building too, that's a big thing. But what I wanted to tell you was my experience with homelessness.
Um, is this?
Is that, okay, I'm just gonna say that. Um, people, like you, you talk about homeless on the streets. People, actually, they lose their life skills. So just putting people in a shelter or. You mentioned the hotel, but they have to have somebody to help them restore their life skills. Do you understand what I'm saying? Like doing dishes, like getting up in the morning and washing and brushing your hair and, you know, preparing some food. All that gets lost when you're out on the street. I'm kind of conflicted about, I'm, right now I'm in the middle of a big conflict here about. Trying to figure out if I should put forward a motion to try and get some tiny houses in Vancouver. On the one hand, winter is coming, and even if we got a few, it might help people stay a little bit drier. On the other hand, I don't want that to be seen. The best solution would be to get the empty hotels. We have thousands of empty hotel rooms. And they're just sitting there and it would be way better than a tiny house because they have bathrooms. It would be especially better during COVID because they have bathrooms and you wouldn't have to use a communal bathroom. So I, I'm right at this point, I'm still pushing for the hotels. I know a lot of people are saying that they think tiny houses. Would be good, even people who are homeless. And I think that's because they don't have any confidence that anything better will ever happen. And I think it's up to us who have homes to push like hell to make sure that something better does happen. And I keep thinking that that idea. Of hiring hotel workers with proper health protocols. For existing hotels. To put homeless people in would be a win, win, win for everybody. Yeah, I agree with that. And Gregor Robertson, when he was here, I told him the downtown east side, I know what it's like down there. And it's like, you've got those big parkades, you know, you could turn those into housing. But my point is that. They need help getting returning themselves into daily life skills. They need help and they need some counseling. Well, some people do, and I think the thing is to make sure that if that's what they want, that that's what they get. But if they don't want that, that they're not required to have it.
Everyone probably heard my horrible dogs barking. They really do love to bark. And Dimitri, I, I imagine you probably are in support of any, of some kind of means of providing federal funding then. To programs that allow homeless, homeless people to transition to home life if they so do.
Yeah, I, I agree with everything that Myna Lee and Jean had to say. Yes, we, we need to enable those who have a need to be. You know. To have the skills restored to them to become independent. Members of society, you know, with a decent life that we have, we provide the resources and the federal government again has. The ability to enable local communities to provide those services. But I also agree with Jean that people shouldn't be forced to do it if they feel that they don't need that level of training. They have to have the option and we as a government have a responsibility to provide that to them.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Myna, for raising this very important point. And yeah, moving, moving on to the next question. This one's from Lex Cook. By the way, folks, this was stated for an hour, but we are gonna go a little bit over both of the participants here. Both Jean and Dimitri have a little bit more extra time, so we'll try to get through these questions as quickly as we can. I'm sorry if we don't get to them all, but we'll try to hit the ones that cover the most diverse area. The most diverse area of issues. So next is from Lex, Lex, you have the floor, or I can read your question for you.
Well, thanks. Hi, Dimitri and Jean. Nice to see you guys. I mean, at the risk of being like an old bromide here, the, the idea of economic, of environmental protection running against economics and the poverty of the cities. How, how do we balance these things?
Thank you so much, Lex.
Balance what?
Well, for Dimitri, the environmental versus economic issues and the poverty for Eugene, within the city, who pays for all of this? All, all of this infrastructure that we see required, especially for homelessness.
So the thing is, it's cheaper to house people who are homeless than it is to keep them on the streets. There is an upfront cost, but over the long term, it's cheaper. And I think the same is true about environmental issues. If we don't deal with them now, they're gonna be amazingly, unbelievably expensive in the future. It'd be way cheaper to. Stop greenhouse gases than it would be to greenhouse gas emissions than it would be to. Build dykes around our whole continent, for example. And, and then it would be to hurricane proof every single building in the country. So I, I think you have to take a long term. Perspective on this and what Dimitri said about the government has the Bank of Canada. It can basically create money. And the other thing is that we haven't talked about yet, what that I'm dying to talk about is taxing the rich. I mean, when you look at how the billionaires have profited from COVID, it's just obscene. And back in the old days. Rich people had a high marginal tax rate, like seventy to ninety percent. And there's a huge public support for that right now. So I'm thinking there is no conflict between economy and social issues or between economy and climate issues. The thing is, we have to do what's necessary now and fast for humane reasons in the case of homelessness. And for actually humane reasons in the case of climate change. And we can borrow money when interest rates are really low like they are now, and we can tax the rich. And that's what we should be doing. There's no excuse for them to have so much obscene wells.
Dimitri? Certainly federal.
On this call, it's gonna be surprised to hear me say enthusiastically, I agree with what Jean said. So I just, I, I want to give another example, you know, we talked about, Jean's quite rightly pointing out the ways in which we save money by making these types of investments in people. And in the environment, if we were to invest in sufficiently in a transportation system to make it robust. More expansive and lower cost to the public. Then one of the things that's gonna happen is vehicular traffic in our cities will go down substantially if we do, do the job right. And of course, all of the pollutants from combustion engine vehicles create respiratory problems. Huge respiratory problems for people in cities, crowded cities, and this has, is a burden on our healthcare system. So if you clean up the air by, in cities, by reducing vehicular traffic, you're lessening the burden on the healthcare system. There's so many ways in which we save money by making these investments. Jean is quite right to emphasize that. I'm absolutely in agreement that the rich are not paying their fair share too. So that's why I'm calling for a seventy-five percent top marginal tax rate on income over five hundred thousand dollars a year. And Jean pointed out that the tax rates historically were higher. They were actually in excess of ninety percent. In, in, in excess of ninety percent in both the United States and Canada for much of the post-World War Two period. And, you know, we're slowly whittled down to where they are today. So by historical standards, seventy-five percent top marginal tax rate is quite modest. Furthermore, I don't think we should be according preferential treatment to capital gains. Because the people who benefit from that are people who have large pools of savings to invest. Many Canadians, I would probably, a majority of Canadians don't. So if you give favorable treatment to, to capital gain, capital income, capital income, what you're basically doing is you're, you're favoring the rich. It's a regressive form of tax for, tax policy. Furthermore, we have huge expenditures on our military. Why are we spending so much money on our military? We're talking about spending nineteen billion dollars on these defective F thirty-fives. We don't need them. Even if they were functioning perfectly well, we shouldn't be making that kind of an expenditure on warplanes. We had a, I think our defense budget, our so-called defense budget, although it's more of an offense budget, if you ask me, in two thousand and eighteen was thirty-two billion dollars. I'm calling for a fifty percent reduction in military spending. And eventually I would like to have a serious conversation in the longer run about complete demilitarization of Canada. But certainly, we're spending way too much money on the military. We're spending billions of dollars a year on fossil fuel subsidies in this country. So there are huge pools of revenue available, whether through. Sharp reductions in military spending, ending fossil fuel subsidies, not spending those billions of dollars on trans Mountain Pipeline, on the Trans Mountain Pipeline. Ending preferential treatment for capital gains. You know, increasing taxes on the wealthy, and I, I think we should have a wealth cap. And tax, you know, gains above the limit of the wealth cap at a hundred percent. That's a real wealth tax. Not this one percent little band-aid that people are getting all excited about, which ultimately isn't gonna solve the problem of extreme wealth. So when you take together all of those resources available. Whether through spending cuts in the milit, on the military, reforming our tax system. Engaging in, you know, money creation through the Bank of Canada. We have ample resources to do all the things we've been talking about on this call, all of it. Expanding our public transportation system, creating a world-class high-speed rail system, ending homelessness. Providing services, social services. That will enable people to avoid homelessness once they've been taken off the streets and given temporary accommodation. We can do all of those things, and I think the proof. That we always had those resources is how the government has reacted to the pandemic. All of a sudden, two hundred and fifty billion dollars materialized in order to support Canadians in an unprecedented public health emergency and economic crisis. We haven't seen anything like this in the post-World War Two period. When the government was forced to spend the money, it found the money. And we've been lied to all these years when we were told the money wasn't there. It is there, there's more to be had, and it's time for us to start allocating those resources in people on the planet. And not in the privileged few and in the corporate sector, which is what we've been doing.
Yeah, well, I agree, I agree with your, with your desired outcomes. I wonder if cap, capital flight would be an issue. And, and just to follow that briefly, that we don't hear about the Tobin tax anymore, and I wonder if that's something that could be stressed as well. The, the small percentile tax on large financial transactions.
Yeah, I, I support the Tobin tax, you know, I think we should absolutely do that. That could be a very substantial source of revenue and would deter. Speculative and socially harmful forms of investment activity on top of it. So like, you know, high-frequency trading would become considerably less popular, profitable. And. With there, you know, to go, to go to your question of capital flight. Yeah, there, there would be a risk of that. So let's suppose that, you know, we imposed a wealth cap. The way that I would structure the wealth cap, first of all, is that. People who are either permanent residents or citizens would have to pay it regardless of their place of residence. So if a billionaire wanted to avoid the, the, the wealth, the wealth tax that I've described. All that person would have to do is surrender Canadian citizenship and move off, move out of the country. They wouldn't have to take their money with them.
Like the Brahmsans did.
Yeah, yeah, they just, in that way, you say, well, what's the advantage of that? The advantage is they can no longer, now because they've left, they, and they can't, they can't vote. You know, and they can't contribute to political campaigns, you've removed from. Our society, potentially corruptive influence on the political class. But they wouldn't necessarily take their money with them. And secondly, a lot of the money that these people have is already offshore. You know, their, their money is, you know, they got a lot of money in tax havens. They got a lot of money invested in foreign corporations. They have a lot of money invested in foreign real estate. They've got villas all over the world, these multi-billionaires. So it's not like all of their money is hidden here in Canada. A big, big chunk of it is already outside of the country. So, you know, if at the end of the day, if you want to leave, you know, I'd open the door and say, thank you very much. You know. Sorry to see you go, but we'll be better off without you.
Good riddance to bad rubbish.
Thank you.
I have a similar, a related issue, Dimitri, I'd be, that's. Comes up a lot in eco-socialist circles and eco-socialist debate is the concept of the Lauderdale paradox, which is that. Private wealth can only be generated by the loss of public wealth. That is applied a lot to Canada's vast natural resources. Private companies come in, they say, well, we'll give you a cut, we'll pay the tax base, we'll give the public a cut, and then we're gonna make profits off. Whatever it is, fossil fuels, mining, minerals, forestry, and something along those lines. Could you speak a little to that? Because that's a common source of conflict if indigenous peoples. I mean, the biggest enemy in many, biggest enemy to indigenous people, certainly in British Columbia, is probably the resource development, the grabbing of their lands, it goes on still. The colonialization of indigenous people's territory, their land, their culture continues. The colonialization of indigenous peoples' territory, their land, their culture continues to go on. Could you speak a speak a little to that, to that concept?
Not sure I've heard that phrase before. You know, in terms, to go back to what I said earlier about indigenous peoples and the exploitation of their lands by extractive corporations, I, you know, I think they have to have an absolute veto over the the so-called development of their land or the the use of their 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 territories for extractive purposes. And if they say no, it's no, end of story. Right now, we have a system where we have consultation or the 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 pattern of consultation. And then if, at the end of that consultative process, however robust it may be, you know, an indigenous community says, no, we don't want the project, too bad. Well, no, they should have the right to say no, and that that no would have to be respected. You know, we have an economics system speaking more broadly, which incentivizes corporations to externalize the cost of their production. And we have to internalize those costs to the maximum possible degree. So to ensure that they're not engaging in activities which are socially harmful but generating huge profits for a small number of corporate actors. So I I'm not sure if I answered your question, Rowan, but
My question, just your thoughts on that area of area of discussion, area of debate, which is seen in a lot of eco-socialist circles. Sorry, we're running out of time, but I want to just cover a few more questions if both of you have time. Just very briefly, we have one for Jean from Albert T. Albert, we have one time for one of your questions. I see you posted a bunch. You have the floor, or I can read them.
Don't worry, I can share the short question. I only asked two. The other one was just too long. But anyway, I'm just wondering what your advice for folks across this country wishing to replicate yourself, Jean, who would wish to run as a socialist local, local city or town councillor?
Well, first of all, I think it's important to run in the cities and municipals municipalities, because as everyone says, it's the closest to the people. You get a real read on what's happening there and municipalities get a lot of pressure from people that helps them do what's right. But I don't know, I think the best thing to do is just to do a lot in your particular municipality. And yeah, do a lot of good things and then just take it from there. If you want to run, get some people behind you and give it a shot. Maybe there's a municipal party. Vancouver, we don't have award systems, so you have to have quite a bit of name recognition before you have a hope in hell of getting elected. But if you have award system, which I think most Canadian cities out of B C do, you have a little better chance if you get known in your neighborhood. And I think our slogan in my campaign was the city we need. And the idea was that we said what we needed, like we needed a rent freeze, we need a mansion tax. Those were two of the main things. And so I think, don't be afraid of saying what's needed and go out there and get support for it and then see if if that support can translate into getting you elected and good luck.
Thank you so much, Albert. I'm or sorry, I didn't, your name is listed here as Albert, but
Oh, it is.
It is fantastic. I wasn't, just wasn't sure. I don't mean to be rude. We have a lot of folks logging in with other computers. I don't want to misname anyone. Thank you so much for your question, though. Your questions were all excellent, by the way. And I would also like to say at this point, if you have any questions and you dearly want them answered, by all means, look up the Team Dimitri website, contact info is on there, and comprehensive answers will be given. So please, by all means, check that out, especially if it's not handled here. The next one, next.
Can I just say something, interrupt here and say something? Rowan, I just wanted to give a shout out to the folks in Victoria, the Unite Here folks who are fasting for their jobs. It's they're such an awesome union. They've been fasting, I think, for ten days now. And all they want is for the government to change a little piece of legislation so that when their jobs come back, they get them and so that the employer doesn't hire other people at lower wages and worse working conditions. And I think we need to, I know Dimitri was there supporting them. And I think we all need to, you know, do do what we can to support those guys. They're really awesome. And I hope we can get them jobs in hotels soon.
Totally agree. And by the way, thank you, Alan Cranch, Crachow, who's on the call, who alerted me to their fast. That's why I went out there. I understand that the B C government is contemplating bailing out the hotel industry and not conditioning the bailout, hundreds of millions of dollars on a guarantee of, you know, employment to these people who return to their jobs at the same level of compensation. I just can't understand how any government could bail out an industry without conditioning the bailout on the protection of workers. That should be the highest priority in any any bailouts area.
So we have a couple of questions here. So I'm just going to kind of like bring them all together. A couple of folks are talking about in the chat about rent control and what are your positions on that? Especially as a means of keeping rents affordable and so on.
Well, I think rent control is really, really important. And I campaigned on the idea of a rent freeze. In B C, rent is controlled by the province. And right now, we have a freeze until December because of COVID. But before that, you could automatically get a two percent increase every year. But the worst part is whenever a tenant leaves, you can raise the rent as much as you like. And the city has a graph about this, and I think it shows that rents are about twenty percent higher in places that are for rent than in places that are rented. And so one of the things this means is whenever anyone leaves or is evicted or is harassed out or bought out, the rent goes up and we lose an affordable, affordable unit. So we in B C, especially in Vancouver, where one one-bedroom apartment rents for about two grand a month, we desperately need rent control that includes what's called vacancy control, which means so that you can't raise the rent as much as you like when the tenant leaves. And we particularly need it in the S R O hotels, the single-room occupancy hotels, where, which are the last resort before homelessness and which are being gentrified. They're being sold, these S R O hotel buildings are being sold as micro suites. And as soon as a new owner buys them, they do everything they can to get rid of the current tenants who are paying three or four hundred dollars a month, and they double or triple the rent. And one of the results of this is that even though we build the odd new modular housing or open up a few hotel rooms for homeless people, at one end, we're shoving them into homelessness by getting rid of these affordable units. So in B C, we desperately, desperately need full rent control. And another thing that rent control would do, and this relates on the federal level, there's a real problem now with these real estate investment trusts buying up apartment buildings as a and using because they're considering these apartment buildings a commodity and an investment rather than a home. And and I'm understanding, maybe Dimitri, you could give me more information on this, that these real estate investment trusts get favorable tax treatment. So they're going around and they're buying these high rises and low rises. And the reason they're buying them is because they see how profitable they will be when they get rid of the existing tenant, because that means they can raise the rent a lot. And so what's happening, and I'm afraid it's really gonna happen during and after COVID, because there might be, you know, if people can't pay their mortgages, maybe there'll be some fire sales and these real estate investment trusts will glom onto more apartment buildings, which they want as an investment, as a commodity, rather than as housing as a human right. So, yeah, rent control, we desperately need. And if there's any way we can get it so these real estate investment trusts don't have favorable tax treatment, I think that would be great.
Yeah, unfortunately, well, unfortunately, rent control is a matter of provincial jurisdiction. But I'm very, very supportive of rent control. I remember when I when I first moved to New York City and out of law school back in the early nineties, rent control was widely in effect in Manhattan. And it was slowly dismantled and the entire character of the city changed. It wasn't just that rents went way up, but workers, artists, people who had, you know, spent their entire lives living in Manhattan, were retirees and had low income, they just disappeared. And now the the entire, you know, beneath Harlem, almost all of Manhattan has been gentrified. And it's it's really, it's it's very unfair to the people who used to be able to live in the city and enjoy the many things that, you know, living in Manhattan has passed to offer. But it's also just really impoverished the character of the city. It's not nearly as interesting a city as it was as it once was because it's become so gentrified. So I think that I think that we have to use all the tools in the toolbox to make housing affordable in our communities and particularly our big cities. That's a real challenge in Vancouver. To the extent that the federal government can help, I certainly will support that. But when it comes to rent control, that is essentially a matter of provincial jurisdiction.
Just just want to say before anyone else heads out, just want to say if you enjoyed this conversation, if you want to have a federal leader of a political party willing to speak honestly about the issues which are confronting cities or confronting all people, people in cities, people in rural areas, a leader who speaks honestly about the real crisis of poverty and inequality that is affecting, that is growing and worsening every day, then by all means, please go on to Team Dimitri, check it out. If you're not part of the Green Party, consider getting a membership. If you really want to see Dimitri succeed, please donate any anything, any anything and everything. Much appreciated.
I I I do need to head off shortly, so we'll do one more question.
Yeah, and I think the last question, maybe this is one that that comes up a lot, but I think it's an important issue is just a lot of questions about G P C and just your thoughts on the G P C, its position on the political spectrum as a source of advocacy and where it should, where it should be, especially relating to the N D P. A couple of questions in chat about that. Who else?
Right. So look, I've been very clear that I think that the six core values of this party, nonviolence, social justice, respect for diversity, participatory democracy, ecological wisdom and environmental sustainability embody the left. These are the values that define the left. And I don't know how you can really give meaning to those values, embrace those values, be passionate about pursuing those values without being on the left of the political spectrum. At the end of the day, you know, where we are precisely on the political spectrum is not the most important thing. The most important thing is that we're giving breath, breathing life into those values. But I do think that there actually is electoral advantage to staking out explicitly a ground on the left of the political spectrum and saying, we are a party of the left, and that is, there's no party in parliament that's doing that anymore. And so this whole space has opened up. The the N D P has moved, you know, to the center, the Liberals have moved to the right. I don't think the Liberals are a centrist party anymore. I think they stopped being a centrist party no later than Paul Martin's rise to power and possibly before then. The the conservatives are heading further, further out on the political, the right of the political spectrum to the point that they may one day become irrelevant. So there's this vacuum in parliament and in the Canadian political scene. Nobody is saying openly, we are a party of the left. Come to us if you are, if you identify as a leftist. And if we did that, I think we would see people coming over to our party in droves. I think it's not just consistent with our core values. I think that it's smart politics. The idea that we're going to dramatically improve our results by continuing to position ourselves as a centrist party and continuing to fight with the Liberals and the, you know, now centrist N D P on their own ground, I think is, to be perfectly blunt about it, I don't mean this disrespectfully, I think it's a pipe dream. You know, we're not going to get dramatically better results by doing the same thing over and over again. If we want to grow this party, we need to change course and seize this enormous electoral opportunity before us to become the voice of, you know, the millions upon millions of Canadians who identify as being left-leaning.
Thank you so much, Dimitri. Jean, do you have any closing comments that you'd like to make?
No, just really great to meet everybody and to meet Dimitri online and thanks so much for doing this.
Thank you so much.
It's a great pleasure talking to you. And by the way, you've given, you gave me some great ideas, especially around home with this. I really appreciate your insight.
It's a real pleasure, everyone. There's gonna be many more events. By all means, learn, by all means, check them out on the website, join the Zoom call. There'll be many more opportunities to 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 ask questions, to get Dimitri's position on things. And thank you so much. We really appreciate the turnout.